Mayor, I know Councilwoman Alvarez is logging in and I believe the council member Medina will be logging in as well. So wait just a moment. It looks like we'll have all five council members.
Thank you. Evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Are we okay to proceed, City Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming here on today for the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting of February the 17th, 2023. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. Item number three, public comments for item that's not on the agenda. Are there any persons that wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
I have no virtual hands raised.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number four, conduct of business. City Clerk?
Conduct of business, item 4A, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with C2R Engineering in the amount of $250,000 to complete stormwater drain pipeline repairs at Caltrans property at the northwest corner of Skyline Boulevard and Sneath Lane, appropriating funds in the amount of $250,000 from the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund and approving a total project budget in the amount not to exceed $250,000.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll turn it over to the City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, members of the City Council in public. Javon Grogan, City Manager. First off, thank you to the City Council for organizing and making yourself available for this special meeting. We have a, one of our principal engineers, David Wong, who will provide a presentation on this evening's item. Just at a high level, as a city council in the public is aware, we currently have a activation of our ELC and we declared a local emergency due to these winter storms that began in late December and through the early part of January. We are currently restoring the infrastructure that was damaged during that storm. And the item before you tonight is a result of not storm damage, but as we proceeded to repair a stormwater drain pipe and a sinkhole, we were able to perform a visual inspection on another part of the stormwater system that's adjacent to where the repairs taking place and discovered that there's a need for an urgent repair. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our principal engineer, David Wong, to provide the City Council with a brief overview.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is David Wong, Principal Engineer with your Public Works Department. Tonight's agenda item is on emergency stormwater drain pipeline repairs. So agenda for tonight's item, I'll go over the background of the project. I'll show the project map, talk about the scope of work and the budget. We'll take a look at some photos. Staff will go over the recommended action for tonight, and then at the end, we'll have time for questions by staff. So some background on the city's stormwater system. The city's stormwater system is aging and the San Bruno stormwater system was largely constructed in the early 1900s. Many of our storm drains need to be replaced, otherwise we risk the chance of either the pipe failing and with that, that could potentially cause soil erosion and sinkholes. Our stormwater system needs substantial improvements in order to maintain the system, and these improvements have been urgently urgently needed for some time now. Our stormwater system does have a historic lack of funding. Currently, the only dedicated funding source for stormwater system is an assessment that's collected on property tax bill. And this generates a total revenue of approximately 600,000, which falls short of what is needed to maintain our stormwater system. Some background on this emergency repair. So about two months ago, California experienced a severe winter storm and that caused record rainfall. About so on January 6th, the 54-inch city storm drain collapsed and this resulted in a large sinkhole and emergency repairs started on that sinkhole on February 3rd. The repairs started initially on 220 linear feet of storm drain pipe after authorization by the ELC Director during the local state of emergency. As a part of the construction, it was necessary to bypass the stormwater runoff within the storm drain line. And during the watering of that storm drain line, we discovered that an additional 120 feet portion of that corrugated metal pipe had now failed. So this is a photo of the sinkhole that occurred on January 6th. And here you can see the shoring that was put in place. It was a fairly large sinkhole. I believe it was 24 feet by 16 feet. And if you look at where my cursor is, you can kind of see the collapse of the storm drain. You can see the two pipe segments that had been together and it sort of fell apart and that's what caused this large sinkhole. And there's a quite a bit of flow running through that storm drain system. So some, some more background. So under normal emergency conditions, a project of this size would require public bidding. Due to the extent of the failure along the storm drain pipe and high possibility of additional storm drain collapse and formation of sinkholes, staff determined that it would be prudent to waive public bidding process for this emergency repair. And this action is allowed under emergency adhority per San Bruno Municipal Code Section 2.44.120A and the California Public Contract Code Section 20168. This, this authorizes a city manager to take such action in an emergency. And California State Law and the Army Municipal Code requires that when the city manager waives the bidding requirements due to an emergency, the City Council may ratify the action by forfeit vote, which declares the existence of the emergency and need for repair. It waives the informal bidding process and ratifies execution of the contract for the amount of 250,000. C2R Engineering is the contractor that will be utilized to make the repair as they ready mobilize onsite to perform the work. And this is, this slideshow is kind of the project map. It shows the project location and alignment of the existing storm drain system within the parking lot. You can see that the line of red is the original 220 feet of corrugated metal pipe, which is currently in the process of being replaced. So in order to install a replacement pipeline, we had to bypass the runoff. And once that runoff was diverted, it became apparent that an additional approximately 120 linear feet of storm drain pipe needed immediate repair. This is that line shown in yellow. So the scope of work for this emergency repair includes replacement of a corroded 54-inch metal pipe with durable 60-inch high-density polyethylene pipe. The contractor will provide shoring to complete the trenching activities. The trench varies in height, but mostly in the parking lot is within 12 to 14 feet. So it's a fairly good sized trench. They're going to install storm drain manholes to facilitate pipe transitions. And at the end of the work, they're going to restore the parking lot by putting back asphalt concrete damaged by the operation as well as repairing any damaged curb and gutter. The budget for this emergency repair is estimated to be $250,000. Here are some more photos. These pictures were actually taken from within the corrugated metal pipe after it had been dewatered. The picture on the left, you can see that portion hanging is actually a piece of the corrugated metal pipe that's just flapping. And if you were to be in the pipe, you would actually see sort of the loose soil that was, that's currently packed over the corrugated metal pipe. The photo on the right, now there's still a little bit of runoff, but you can see the corrosion kind of happening all around the pipe, especially where the water kind of flows. There's quite a bit of corrosion. And here are some more photos. These are close-ups of the corrugated metal pipe on the bottom. And you can kind of see a lot of void spaces between the ridges of the corrugated metal pipe. And again, this corrugated metal pipe is being proposed to be replaced with durable, high-density polyethylene, which is a form of plastic pipe. The total project budget for this work include is 250,000 and it would include construction and construction contingency. The general fund capital reserve fund balance is approximately 7.7 million at this time. And this amount is sufficient to fund the estimated total project cost of approximately 250,000. So tonight's recommended action is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with C2R Engineering in amount of 250,000 to complete the storm drain pipeline repairs at Caltrans property at the northwest corner of Skyline Boulevard and Sneath Lane, appropriating funds in amount of 250,000 from the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund and approving a total project budget in the amount not to exceed 250,000. And with that, that concludes the presentation. And our Public Works Director, Natalie Lee, and myself are available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wong, for your presentation and the information. And then we'll go questions on the presentation from council members. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on the illustration that you presented, the drawing in the, I'm sorry, the picture in the middle of the parking lot towards the hill where is the red line. And whereas the yellow line is basically what you're proposing to additional pipe that needs to be replaced. Did you, did the staff video the full line of the pipe? Because we, when, when you showed the corrugated picture from the video, there's a lot of cracking. So that's what your, your the, the staff is going to replace. What is, where is the end line of the pipe? Do they need to be replaced or the transition between the corrugated and the new material that you're going to be replacing with? Because it's in the middle of the parking lot.
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Alvarez. I believe the best person to answer that is our principal engineer. At a high level, the current 120-foot repair is proposed to go from one manhole to another manhole. That southernmost manhole, the pipe portion down from the 120-foot section is actually in very, in much better condition. And it was videoed and there is not a recommendation to replace that. There is work that needs to be, needs to be done on the northern section of the pipe at a later date. And if we have staff here that can discuss that, we'll, we'll call them in. So David Wong, if you have anything to add, please do. And I also know that we have our SCREEP Superintendent Ted Chapman on and I can bring him in as well.
Sure. Thanks, Juan. So Councilmember Alvarez, so the City Manager is correct. The current repairs, so the end of this, a little tip on, I'll call it the bottom right. It was videoed, the entire line from from Sneath Lane to Skyline Boulevard and the portion south, I'll call it bottom right of that yellow line is good. The portion kind of above the red line, that condition will have to be eventually repaired sometime in the future, but not, it's not at critical risk of failing, unlike the yellow portion.
Thank you. No, I think the City Manager have answered my, my question, but thank you for the additional explanation, David. Appreciate it.
Any other, thank you very much, Councilmember. Any other additional questions from colleagues on the presentation? Seeing no hands at this time, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
I have no virtual hands raised.
Thank you very much. Bringing it back to the Council for any other further discussion, deliberation, and/or action. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my, my question is, you know, I understand that, you know, there's a sense of urgency around this, but given that there would be potentially some additional work being done, is there a possibility that we could probably, that we could do a bigger project and possibly save some money if we were to just schedule this out and do it as part of a a bigger project rather than addressing this emergency piece now and then looking at the rest of it later?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Salazar. The work that is proposed now is pipe replacement. So replacing the 54-inch corrugated metal with 60-inch plastic pipe, that's the work that's actually just been done just north of this area. And the contractor is in place with an avoid, avoid additional mobilization costs. The work that would be needed on the northern section of the pipe is likely not pipe replacement, but lining the pipe. And it's a totally different type of project. I do see that we have Ted Chapman as a panelist and so I can Ted, if you're able to provide a little bit more clarity or David to what that the type of work that would be done in the northern section, that may be helpful.
Good evening, Councilmembers. This is Ted. I'm not sure, I'm on my phone, so excuse me for that, but the section north and the section that we are proposing to work on going south by 120 feet, both sections after they were videoed, we knew we were going to need to line them. But after the water was basically bypassed, we found that the line, the 120 feet below, the bottom of the pipe is actually gone and deteriorated to the point we need to replace it now. The section above us that is approximately 136 feet, we can line at a later date. Not necessarily as a, as a price savings or a cost savings, but it's a fact that that pipe is not compromised as bad as the pipe is on the lower end. If that answers your question.
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Medina.
Thank you for the report. My question is, I mean, these pipes were all installed at the same time, pretty much. I'm speculating that. And it's due to corrosion. So the northern section is a steeper slope, so there's maybe not as much water getting stuck in those, those ridges. And as you videoed further south, did you go all the way to the, I guess, the next manhole? I mean, just wanted to understand. This is hearing that the bottom of the pipes rotted out. That's, that's, I didn't pick that up in the staff report, which is very disturbing, but that's what it is. So see if I can get some answers on. My, my concern is when are we going to have to come back and repair more pipe?
Thank you, Councilmember Medina. So the the southern portion of this area past the 120-foot section was, actually had a more recent replacement. And so Principal Engineer Wong or Ted Chapman, who's ever best to respond, please do.
I'll, I'll respond to that. City Manager. The bottom section is what we found in the video is still completely tar coated. So we suspect when that was originally installed, the upper section was installed and then there was probably a creek that flowed underneath Skyline. And then that was put into a pipe, most likely probably in the 50s sometimes, but the bottom section from the manhole that we found of where we terminate the 120 feet from there down to Skyline Boulevard is actually, like I said earlier, is tar coated and is in good shape. We actually had our video crew member walk up through that pipe earlier when we did the initial video. And he commented that that pipe was in good shape. So that is why we determined initially that we were going to need to go back and line it, but now we found out after the flow of water stopped, it is, the upper section was in worse shape than we thought.
Great explanation. Thank you, Ted. Nice to hear your voice. The other question I have is, is the cost for restoring a parking lot that? So it's Caltrans property. It's our storm drain pipe. And we're required to restore it back to the, the parking lot condition?
Yeah. So the bid that you have before you for 227,000 includes restoring the AC. So we will patch out, repatch the sections that we're removing, as is the prior 220-foot section that we're, will restore the asphalt as well. But that, that property is owned by Caltrans, currently leased to the Church of the Highlands, but the city's storm drain runs through there. And we have found records where that that was recognized and we're, we're prepared to restore the asphalt to a parking lot because we need to remove it to fix the storm drain.
Right. I guess my legal question is, so we, do we have a storm drain easement through that property?
So staff has been researching that. And if I can point to David Wong, he can articulate the research that has been done on that.
Oh, sure. So we did post some market information and we do have a storm easement within the vicinity, the approximate vicinity of that storm drain alignment.
Okay. So I'm basically trying to figure out, and I could be wrong on this, is if we have an easement, improvements placed on that easement are not, we're not required, I would, I thought we may not have to restore it because exactly for this case, you know, here we are replacing our pipe and there's a parking lot there, or maybe they put a structure there. So I'm just curious if, if we looked at all the ways that, well, it's kind of like revocable encroachment permit. But I could be totally wrong because we're dealing with Caltrans, but it's kind of like they put the parking lot there over our easement and now we have to deal with restoring it to a parking lot. And would that legally happen today? Or is this something that kind of happened back in the 50s and like we're now caught to not really restore, put the pavement back in, but now, you know, to stripe it?
Yeah. So Councilmember Medina, let me turn that question to our city engineer, Haywan Ritchie. And I think she, she may not be able to answer the legal component of your question, but she can talk about what is normal and customary in a case like this. And if need be, I do know that we have our city attorney on as well.
Yes. Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmember Haywan Ritchie, the engineer. So typically, if an area's map say there's a subdivision being created and we know that there are lines that are public that are running through the private property, we we may require public utility easements or storm drain easements or various easements of which we're interested. And in that case, because it is for the public and we determine that to be, you know, we've got that to be offered and dedicated to the city, we would be responsible because we are the owners of that utility. However, if it could be that if there are separate agreements potentially in place that recognizes the maintenance responsibilities, then you know, that is something that we could further look into to see if there's anything like that. I personally am not aware of, you know, the specifics of the research that has been conducted, but I think in in the research, you know, we would, that would be something we would look into to see if there's any agreements of that sort. If not, I think I would rely on our city attorney to opine whether by default and would that be allowed to the city to and the owner to repair.
And, you know, Mayor Medina and Councilmember Medina, this is just not something I can opine on kind of on the spot here. I think we'd need to have more information about the various property rights and easements. I just, I, I can't say offhand what the responsibilities of the parties are.
And that, that's totally understandable. This is kind of an audible case and like, did they, did they have to get permission to, from, to put a parking lot on top of our pipe? Was there enough cover on the pipe? Did they, did it, was it installed, parking lot? The pipe was installed first and so did they properly secure our pipe when they were backfilling it, all that stuff? But I understand I'm going off on a tangent. We need to get this work done. I won't ask any more questions on it. It's just kind of, it kind of just made me start thinking about the legal side of responsibility. So that's my question for now. And I'll, I'll wait to hear from my colleagues.
Any other colleagues wish to speak at this point? I hear none. Is there any action by council?
I have one more question then, if there's nobody from our colleagues, Mr. Mayor.
Please, let's, let's do it once around the room and nobody else. Mr. Medina, you're
Yeah. So what is the estimated cost savings for a pipe of this length to, if it went out to bid? I understand there's a saving, savings on mobilization. But do, is there a, a number that we're thinking that we would save by going with this contractor, the mobilization cost? Is that it? We have an engineer's estimate for this repair work then?
So Councilmember Medina, I don't think that we're able to give an off-the-cuff savings figure. We do know that we will, want to avoid mobilization costs. Typically, when you're doing an emergency repair of this nature, you have your engineers take a look at the bid that your contractor has provided. This contractor, I believe, was under contract with the city to provide emergency repair work, so they were So they were pre-vetted with us and has done work for the city. I think in order to provide a estimated savings, we would, we would, we would, we would need to bid it out. And I don't think we're prepared to give a number at this time on what proceeding with this action versus sort of pausing. We certainly know that there'd be mobilization costs and other startup costs, but just unable to give an estimate at this time.
Understood.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, are there any action by council?
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Motion Salazar, second to Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Passage unanimous, 5-0. City managers, are there any other items or things we need to consider? And do you have directions that you need?
We do. Thank you. We believe that this work can be accomplished within a week. And so thank you for allowing us to have this meeting and, sorry, my screen's broke.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much to everybody from the staff as well as the council for coming together. And with that, we will adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting, which will be held on February 28th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good, safe, enjoyable weekend and holiday.
Thanks, everyone.